Good evening. Welcome to the March 21st, 2022 Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please join me in rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. First, I'd like to open up the floor to public participation. If there's anyone in the public that would like to address the board, please rise, go to the microphone, and state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, do we have any emails?
It's still rotating, but there are no emails yet.
Okay. I will close public participation. The next item on the agenda is recognitions.
We do not have any for this evening.
Thank you. Item number four, the informational updates, the superintendent update.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the residents who came to the deliberative session for the support of the warrant articles being passed on to the voters. It shows a great community spirit and a support for the school district, and we greatly appreciate that. Just a reminder, we have an early release day coming up this Friday, March 25th. The staff will be discussing collaborative problem-solving approach to discipline. I'm familiar with that particular training. It is quite effective, and we are looking forward to an excellent session. We currently have several positions that are being advertised, two most notable at present, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and the Assistant Principal for Merrimack High School. We are receiving a good number of applicants and some quality applicants, and we have met with the high school administration to talk about the constitution of the team that will be screening applicants. And also, we have about a 20-person screening team who will be reviewing applications for the Assistant Superintendent position. So that is moving forward as quickly as possible, while looking to fill those positions certainly with quality people. From the high school, I want to congratulate the FIRST Robotics Team, who won the Engineering Inspiration Award. This was with the U.S. FIRST Robotics Organization, FIRST standing for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. So the Inspiration Award is the second highest award given to a team at the competition. The award not only recognizes a team for their robot engineering, but it recognizes the work that a team does to spread the message of STEM in their school and community. They also had one student, Olivia Diaz, who was chosen as a Dean's List finalist. Each team can nominate two students, who are either sophomores or juniors, for this award. The students are supposed to be leaders on their team and ambassadors for the FIRST Organization, and it's quite an honor to receive this recognition. And Olivia will be one of 24 students from FIRST Teams, that's the organization once again, in New England, and will be considered to advance to a broader-scale championship. So we congratulate Olivia for an outstanding job and the Robotics Team. I want to thank Matt and parent organization trustees. Matt's going to say a little bit more about Thornton's Ferry Playground. I don't want to steal Matt's thunder. I'll let him talk about that, because that has been a very important project involving fundraising, and Matt's a great support and trustee, so let him cover that. And I believe that is all for tonight.
Thank you very much. Next is, any questions from the board? Next is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update. Kim?
Thank you very much. Just, as Bill mentioned, this Friday's training with the Collaborative Problem-Solving Approach is part of one of three initiatives that we established for the school year under social-emotional learning, the others being UDL, Universal Design for Learning, and the Canvas Initiative to have the platforms all common. And this training will occur at all six schools for all staff, including paraeducators and professional staff. So we look forward to that. We trained over 30 staff persons on how to use the EduPlanet 21 tool for curriculum development. And at the high school, Amy Larkin-Perez led the initiative to have the health curriculum to begin to be uploaded onto the platform, so there's really exciting development with that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Assistant Superintendent for Business update, Matt?
Thank you. Last Friday, I had the pleasure to have Rachel Papke and Kim Damaris accompany me. Rachel's the head of the Parent Teacher Group at Thornton's Ferry School, and Rachel is no longer at that school, but she's seeing this project through. Those two women are exceedingly dedicated into providing Thornton's Ferry with an inclusive playground. It's the upper playground. We have the lower playground. We have the preschool playground, and then we have an upper playground. And so that's where the equipment would go. So we went in front of the Trustees of Trust Funds, Chris Christensen, Bill Wilks, and Pat Heinrich, and we secured the sum of $42,500 to supplement the almost well over $100,000 that that parent group has raised for the playground to make it become a reality. You recall, we do have $30,000 in the operating budget for associated site work that needs to be done, but the company who's chosen is going to be doing all the work, and it will be all to standard specifications inspected by our insurance company and be certified and everything like that. The days of putting up wooden structures by community volunteers, while those were fun and rewarding for the community, are long since gone with safety regulations. So it's very important that it be done professionally, and we just want to thank the trustees of trust funds for their generosity in supporting the project. We also presented a project, as you recall in the past, the trustees have funded the renovation of the Reed's Ferry Library, Thornton's Ferry Library, MES Library, and J-Muse Library. And so now, we're asking for them to consider the high school library. Jessica Gott and her crew with Steve, Claire have been working diligently to come up with proposals. They've put a number to it for at least the equipment portion of it, and they have come up with some designs that we're looking at. The trustees would like to do a tour of the existing library to see existing conditions, and they were handed the plans, and so they're going to look at the plans for informational purposes and for them to get an idea of what we're dealing with and what the vision of the high school is for a new library. Personally, I'd like to see something that has more of an adult-themed kind of, I don't want to use the word upscale, because I always recoil when I hear that in comparing it or using it for a public facility. That doesn't mean Taj Mahal. That just means nice, comfortable, welcoming, an adult kind of atmosphere. Because when you give kids an adult kind of atmosphere that looks good and functions well for group projects or group exchanges, the level of their behavior rises to the surroundings that they're in. I've always kind of believed that. So that's something that we're going to have the trustees come down, take a look at the existing conditions. We're already making arrangements to have the carpet replaced in that library, and we're going to be trying to go forward to get this off the ground during the summertime. If the details aren't all there, we may have to delay to another summer. I just want to put that out there as a cautionary tale because of supply chain and everything like that, and we're running up against the end of the school year pretty close in order to get orders in. But we're starting the process. They showed great support for that project, and we'll be happy to entertain them and give them a tour. So that's my update. Thank you.
Great. Questions?
I just wanted to really commend the Reed's, I mean, the Thornton's Ferry parents, you know, for their work. That's a phenomenal effort. I would love if they're available, if they'd be willing to come maybe to our next meeting and provide us, you know, so we can see what it looks like and, you know, really tell the community about it, because those efforts were a lot to be proud of from that group.
It's an amazing job that they have done. Amazing job.
And I, you know, what I hope is that it becomes a prototype that we can look to, you know, our other schools, so we have consistency around that. But I think it's a great way to kind of pave the way for such an important thing.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's it. Next up is the School Board update. I don't have an update. Then Student Representative update.
I just have a quick update for the high school students and parents, and it's that we have all eight-period days this week. No block days. Yes, no block days. The juniors are taking SATs this week. There is still the early release day on Friday, but that's still a modified eight-period schedule, and we start in homeroom on Wednesday. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right. Old business, approval of the revised student conduct, discipline, and due process policy. This is the third meeting that we've had this on our agenda. I wanted to open it up if there's any changes. It was on consent. I pulled it off because I at least do have a couple of things, and I wanted to see if anyone had any feedback. Lori?
So I was, when I was reading the discipline, when I got to the first page and we were talking about some of the core values, I was thinking that as we look at the vision and mission statement for Merrimack High School, and we talk about, you know, what are the values that we want our students to have when they graduate from high school? For example, you know, we talk a lot in the document about respect. I think that would be a core value, responsibility, you know, character, courage, and trustworthiness, and we have some of that. We say courtesy, decency, and honesty, but I would like to go, you know, hopefully with stronger core values that we can talk to the students every day. These are our core values. These are the values that when you graduate from Merrimack High School, we hope that you take with you, to rely on them throughout your life. And then, there was, there were some questions for me about the levels of discipline, and I was wondering, we talked, Matt said that our student handbook was online and that we had, you know, created those Level Ones, Level Twos, Level Threes, Level Fours of discipline, but I'm wondering if we need to have the student handbook and the discipline policy together, you know, like, so here's the student handbook, here's our levels of discipline, here's our consequences for the different levels of discipline, and then here's our discipline policy. And then, I did, I was wondering about a few different things with suspensions and, you know, a short-term suspension versus a long-term suspension. Again, I had some questions there. When we had, on page four of 12, when we talked about elementary school graduated disciplinary consequences, I guess I would want to know more about planned ignoring, where if a student is acting inappropriate in a class where we're allowing that behavior to continue, I would like to know the research on that, because I just don't know personally if ignoring a behavior that is inappropriate is the right way, you know? And then, again, just how quickly do we reengage students when we have them time away from activity or group? Again, you know, I just, it says they'd be out for a period of time. You know, I would hope that we'd reengage them quickly, so it doesn't really say that. And then, on the same thing, under apologies, it says the district will not require apologies. I would rather it say something like, "We would encourage all students to apologize for their behavior," because I can just see someone saying, "Well, they don't have to apologize." It says in the policy that they don't have to, but we really do want them to own up to their behaviors and be responsible and apologize. So I just would like the wording to say, "In a disciplined situation, we would encourage all students to apologize, either in writing or in person." And around this whole policy, I know it's really about restorative justice and taking away shame, and I really do appreciate that language, and I just want to make sure, though, that administrators and teachers also know that this discipline code is there to support them, and it's not that they can't discipline a student, that, yes, we're going to look for restorative justice, but there are consequences for behavior. And when a student has a Level One or a Level Two offense, we're going to be very concrete. You're going to be suspended for two days. This is the consequence, and this is the restorative action. Going to page number eight, so the other decision, the other part that I felt we really needed to be very clear about is when a student has a long-term suspension, so they've been suspended more than five days. When they come back, we talk about this in a couple different places, but it's not really concrete. I think anybody, anytime after a long term, there should be a meeting with the principal or a meeting with the principal to reengage them back in the environment, to talk to them about, okay, so you're back from suspension, you had a fight, how are you going to handle things differently? You know, if you have any questions today, my door's open. I know today, a lot of kids are going to be asking you about the fight, because there will be that, you know, aftermath, how to settle that down. So I think that just needs to be a little clearer. Like, it says it, but I'd like to say, after a long-term suspension, there will be a meeting with the principal, the parents, and the student, not after a day or two, but after a longer one. So they have strategies coming back to school, so they don't repeat on the first day that they get back and get back tangled up.
On that one point, Lori, does it make sense not to say when they get back, but prior to returning, so that way while they're out and suspended, you can have those meetings with the student, so that when they enter the building, those expectations are already set?
That's not a bad idea if the parent can do it. It's, you know, that's a good idea if the parent can come in a day earlier, that then the student might feel shame walking back out the building.
No, I'm saying you can do it on Zoom and everything else. So that way, you don't bring them back into the environment until they're allowed to be here, but you would have meetings over the phone, Zoom, whatever, and you can do that easier after hours anyway. So that way, they come into the school with expectations set, and parents kind of signed off on the agreement. Just a thought.
Yeah, somehow, just a reentry. I know we do reentries. We talked to, Kim was talking about like reentry when a student was depressed or suicidal, there's always a reentry. So I think it's the same idea, just to make sure they can come back and they can get back to business without a lot of drama, because the first day is the drama day, right? The first day back. So those are just a few of the things that I found. Bill, did you have a comment?
Yes, I would suggest that we probably hold on this tonight, therefore, and probably bring it back at the next meeting, if you could send those comments. Lori, we'll take a look at them, we'll discuss them with the leadership team. I agree, certainly agree with your comments about the correlation between the policy and the handbook. They have to be consistent in terms of what the expectations are. I don't have a problem waiting another two weeks with this if we want to have a little bit more complete document here.
Yeah, and I agree, and I just had, I mean, before I just give a couple of quick two-sense worth, I see Shannon has comments.
I only had, found a typo, and that is page five, bullet one, referral only has one R. Oops, sorry about that.
Jenna or Lori, any additional commentary? Lori Peters?
Well, it's, it was kind of tagging on to what Lori said. I think one of the things, the situation that we find ourselves in now is we need to make it clear to parents what the expectation is of them when we have a very serious thing. And I think adding that verbiage in about having that meeting so that mom, or dad, or guardians, grandparents are all on the same page, so that when the student returns, they don't just know what the expectations are. Their family knows, and then there's no surprises. And I think sometimes parents don't always know what is expected of them from the administration.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right. I just had a couple of things. I think to the point of, you know, I agree with the point of the student handbook, and maybe even there's an alignment between the staff handbook, too, staff, student, and I think they all need to be in alignment. I might even suggest, you know, taking this back internally, you know, with, you know, a group getting, adding input, you know, like Heather Barker in Fern Sidon, you know, social-emotional learning, and just have them go through this with a fine-tooth comb and maybe come back with a revised policy. And then I had a couple of other comments. I think just the definitions of the Level One, Level Two, Level Three, and Level Four could be clearer, because there's some that, you know, look like they could fall in the high school that is, you know? And just maybe a better sense of what that definition is. The other thing is, again, I think probably supporting this with professional development. I compared our prior policy to this, and our prior policy was a half a page, so there's a lot in here that wasn't before, so that just tells me that we probably, you know, could use some professional development around it. There's another part on page five of 12, the second set of bullets. The bottom one says essentially that middle and high school graduated disciplinary consequences include, but are not limited to, the following, and one of them is superintendent involvement. I don't know if it's customary that every disciplinary action would have superintendent involvement, so I don't, it doesn't, that seems a little over the top, particularly for the Level One, Level Two defenses. I don't think that we would want to require our superintendent to have to get involved in every disciplinary action. And then, on page seven, the middle set of bullets, there's two bullets that are duplicative. It says, "Behavior or misconduct that threatens significant harm to the health, safety, or welfare of the student." It says the same thing twice, so that's just a typo. And then, I think that it may be worth consideration, I guess I would defer to Heather Barker on that, regarding situations that are a manifestation of disability. I know there is at least a, on page eight, the fourth bullet, it does talk about Section 504 and the idea, but I wonder if there might be more verbiage we need regarding manifestation of disability meetings. And then, there's also a section that says that nothing can be appealed, that any administrator, any administrator's decision cannot be appealed, but there's a contradiction on page nine that says, "A student who repeats any of the long-term suspension infractions listed above may be referred to the school board for an expulsion hearing." I don't know if that's a contradiction or not. The other thing that I thought was important to point out, and I'm just saying these notes so that when you review them internally, you can just have some food for thought. It talks about, you know, suspension, and, you know, it's not clear to me if I were a parent reading this, you know, is it an excused or unexcused absence, and what rights the student has to make up that work? And there was another section on page 10, the second bullet, it says, "Any act of physical or sexual assault that would be a felony have committed by an adult." I just had some questions, you know, like, is it a student or an adult? Like, how do we want to address that in our policy? You know, do we treat them all as students? Or I just, there was a little gray area for me there. And then on page 11, additionally, building principals shall ensure student, and then I was going to say, "And staff awareness of the established expectations for student conduct and behavior." One other thought was the requiring of a, and maybe we do this already, but it could still be in this policy, was a student orientation meeting every year, you know, as far as, you know, setting the expectations, and I'm assuming that's probably done somewhere, but it's not in here. And I think that that is pretty much, those are my pieces.
May I give you some homework? If you would send to Sandy just a brief outline of your comments, the page to reference, because what I want to do is, we did have the leadership team review this policy several weeks ago. In fact, it was probably more like two months ago now. What I want to do is take a look at your comments and review them with our legal counsel, because as, you know, as he indicated to us in the professional development session that he provided to us a while back, that discipline has been taken out of the discretion of a local school district, and now is pretty much statutorily defined. And so whatever we come up with in terms, and you suggest to me in terms of changes or modifications, I just want to review with our legal counsel to make sure that that does not materially change the statutory requirements that are included in this, in the policy. I want you to have great comments, and I'll be glad to review those with our counsel.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on. New business, review of the 2022-2023 school calendar.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give you a little bit of explanatory material behind what goes into the school calendar. I think many people feel it's just selecting a start date of the school year, what the last day of school is, but there are a lot of other considerations that come into the development of a school calendar. And for those at home, just briefly review them. We want to make sure that the calendar is readable and is attractive and logical in terms of being able to determine various dates and events, that it kind of speaks to a parent or a staff member in terms of what's going on during the school year. We need to consider in the development of the calendar, the required number of instructional days. There's a state requirement, not only instructional days, but the number of contract days in accordance with collective bargaining agreements. We want to take a look at what type of professional development that we want to focus on in the following school year, and what types of days and the dispersal of those days throughout the calendar work best for that professional development. We want to incorporate some information about holidays, cultural observances, and vacation weeks. We want to take and set the high school graduation date, which in New Hampshire cannot be any more than five school days prior to the originally scheduled last day of school. That snow days or inclement weather days are not taken into consideration in that respect. We want to take a look at when parent conferences are most logically placed in the calendar. We want to consider election days. Is it a midterm election? Is it a major national presidential election? As I said, we want to take a look at collective bargaining agreements. We want to take a look at what kindergarten registration date or dates might look like. Is it important to build into the calendar a transition day or time period for those students who are coming to school for the first time, or those students who are transitioning from one building or one school to another school? That sometimes is more difficult for some children than others. We want to put different information and helpful information on the school calendar. Lots of people, quite honestly, if you ask 10 people, they'll probably give you six different answers about when does the school day start and when does the school day end for each respective school, and what are the early release times. So those pieces of information are important also. We want to get parent and staff input, and to that end, we did a survey of both the parents and the staff. You know, the MTA contract states that by January 15th, we're to receive input You know, the MTA contract states that by January fifteenth, we're to receive input from the union on the calendar. Well, my feeling has always been, let's involve some members of the union in a consult role, directly at our meetings, to talk about the calendar, which we did. We had a representative of the elementary level, we had a representative from, from grades six through twelve. And so, they were very actively involved, very helpful, brought out some very good points in our meetings, probably more so than what I, what a survey might have brought forth. As I said, we want to be, we want to be sensitive to cultural and religious observances. They were not scheduling concerts, or different activities, on events and holidays of, of significance to some of the community. And, something very important is that the state is now looking for local communities to align their calendars, to the greatest extent possible, to the career technical education centers that we feed into. And so we've had several meetings in the south-central region of superintendents over the last two months or so. We just had our latest meeting about a week and a half ago. And I think we, in Merrimack, are in pretty good shape. We have until the end of next year to, to put this in place, but we're already in, in pretty good shape in that, in that regard. What the state wants to make sure of, is, we don't have a lot of days where our students in Merrimack may be on vacation or out of school, yet there is school at the career technical education centers, okay? So, we've put together a calendar, two draft calendars. One that incorporates the start of school before Labor Day, and one that incorporates the start of school after Labor Day. We've put various days of professional development on the calendars, parent conference days, the graduation dates that are on the calendars. We've put notes aside of each month, with respect to what events are taking place, what vacations, what PD days, what professional development days are be, are taking place on that particular month. We've counted the number of student days, and the number of contract days, to make sure that we are in compliance with the hundred-and-eighty-day requirement, and also the hundred-and-eighty-seven-day work, work year for the MTA. Our survey results support what we have put forward in the, in the calendars. Both calendars incorporate transition, a transition period of time, albeit only two hours, but it is a transition time. It will be on the first day of school, whether it starts before Labor Day or after Labor Day. I've talked with the bus company, they are able to accomplish that, where the new students, the transitioning students in grades K. three, five, seven, and nine, K. five, seven, and nine, excuse me, come in at the original start time, on the first day of school. The other students come in two hours later, on the first day of school. Just to give our new transitioning students a little bit of time to become acclimated to the building, to the environment, feel a little bit more comfortable with the who, what, when, where, and why of their new, new building. We have accounted for all the days that we need to. One thing that was particularly gratifying, is that a number of parents agreed with starting prior to, prior to Labor Day. A large majority of parents liked the transition day, not transition time, and a large number of parents and staff members supported the early release days. And I understand certainly that these are somewhat new to the district. What I've found in the past, is that, as long as parents know far enough in advance when the early release days will occur, they are much more accepting of them than if, I were to say today, or tonight, that, well, next week, we're gonna change the calendar, and it's going to be an early release. That is very difficult for parents, for a childcare perspective. But as long as they know in advance, they are accepting of the early release days. And so, I hope you find it helpful. I hope you find the calendars informative. I'm not necessarily looking for a vote on this tonight, because I'd like to have you have an opportunity to digest what we presented here. But I did want to give you a little bit more insight in the public, in terms of what goes into the development of our school calendar. And I'll be glad to answer your questions.
I'll start with Lori Rothaus, and we'll just go right across.
So, I'm a, I've been a proponent of starting before Labor Day. You know, kids are really tired at the end of the race, and they have a lot of energy at the beginning of the race, so I think that's, that's a good thing, lining the calendars with other school districts. And then, again, the professional development piece, you know, throughout the school year, it is critical. And when you look at, you know, teachers in the United States, our teachers teach more hours in the classroom than any other developed country, and have the least amount of professional development. They need that professional development. There's this great book that said, "Feed your teachers, or they'll eat their students." And we have to, you know, give them that time to have professional discussions, and, and, and to grow and to work together. So, I love this, I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you.
Shannon, did you have anything?
I actually had a couple things. First, just, I didn't see the survey, but I know it's from the board that went to the parents. So, I, I got the results, but I didn't, I, I saw online that the school board sent, and I didn't get to see it before we talked to the parents. So, I think for future years, that was never something where the board didn't get line of sight to it. So, it was always shared prior.
Yes, I apologize.
Yeah, I, I just, I thought there were some good additional questions, huh? Yeah, but I just didn't see it, and I just, so, I think it's on Facebook, honestly. So, you know, getting a note from the board on Facebook was kind of weird. So, but a couple of comments on the calendars themselves. You mentioned the importance of considering election days. The midterm election is November eighth, and that's not showing as anything different for school operations. The local one would be April eleventh to twenty-three, and that's also showing normal school operations. So I didn't know, you know, considering that the midterm might be very heavily utilized our facilities, if there was consideration for those dates.
We, we did talk with the leadership team about that, a couple of weeks ago. They felt strongly that we could conduct school operations, particularly on midterm date, certainly with some alternate parking arrangements, as they have been in the past. But, they felt from a school security perspective also, that we could still maintain normal school day at that point in time.
Were we able to get from the moderator what the anticipated voting volume, of course, not legally binding, but what the projected voting volume was for the eighth specifically, November eighth?
I have spoken with Lynn about the election, election dates. She did say that she expected a, certainly more of a turnout on the midterm election and local election. Didn't give a specific number, but she said it certainly is more heavily attended.
Definitely. And then I noticed on the before Labor Day draft, that there's a teacher workshop the day after the last day of school.
Yes, that is for finishing up, and making sure that we comply with a hundred-and-eighty-seven day contract year.
So there's, no, is there a reason why we wouldn't put it in the middle of the year for actual professional development and skill building?
Well, we interspersed the PD days throughout the year, and we thought that, let me just grab my calendar here, excuse me.
I don't want to answer for you, but I just want to jump in here, because it's pretty customary, a lot of, like Hudson does it, I know a lot of surrounding communities do a last, like a day after the last day of school, so that teachers don't have to pack up and wrap up and do all of that on their own time.
And I hear you, but I'm also hearing Lori that says that the skill building and the content that is desperately lacking in American teachers, were kind of like counterintuitive by saying you're gonna pack your classroom that day. So that's, that's why I was asking that question specifically, actually.
And I think there's also advantage to reflection and looking back, you know, just like with all things, right? What went well this year, what didn't, what do we need help with next year, what are some, I mean, there's that part of the process too, that can be, you know, really, really useful.
But if it's just a packing your classroom day, grading your papers day, I, I didn't, it wasn't really clear what that day would be really about.
Yeah, I don't think it's really packing up your classroom as much as making sure that all, all of the documents that are necessary in terms of student, student assessment information, any transitioning information, moving from one building to the next is, is in place, that, that the teachers historically use that time to, to meet with the building administrator, to make sure that everything is, is in line, instead of walking out the building. And I don't mean this in a negative way, with the students on the very last day of school. It gives them at least that little bit of time left, to make sure that everything is in order at the end of the year.
Yeah, but I think it goes back to Lori's point, of it's not building a skill. I mean, if there's reflection in all of that, what you call data analysis, things, you know, measuring, and then looking at what that means for, for adjustment, that makes sense to me. But, you know, the compliance part and calling it the teacher workshop didn't.
Well, and I would say, we also have some time to reflect on this, so, you know, we're kind of taking back this proposal, certainly. You know, we have the ability to come back and, you know, suggest any changes, but, and if that's one, you want to suggest, we could talk about that in a couple of weeks, if that's, it becomes something that... Oh, Kim, sorry.
Thank you. Shannon, I really appreciate your comment. And the fifteenth actually is early release for students. We typically, the last day, will send students home, and that afternoon is used for cleaning up the classrooms. And I agree with you, that we would not indicate that that's a PD day, that's not PD, that's, that's like when you set up your classroom in the beginning of the year, that's not PD, that's teacher workshop time. But, what I have found over the years is that, there are occasions where we might buy a particular curriculum mid-year for the following year, so for example, invigils will be coming up for renewal, and we're like, oh, I wish we could put it into the hands of the teachers before the summer, in the event that they wanted to look at it and plan for it. So I can see that day being used for professional development, targeted professional development that is for, it's, it's foreseeing what's coming in the future in the fall, and you're putting materials into the hands of teachers.
That's a really good point, thanks, Kim.
Yeah, so I'll just follow up, end my conversation with that. I have no problem with a professional development day there, because I trust our administrators. And I know that if we call it a professional development day, that it'll be used for professional development. So, I have no problem with that whatsoever. I love this new format. It's so much more user-friendly. The times, it's the silliest thing, but even sometimes, I mean, how many kids I've had, I'm like, which school starts at which time? What is it again? What time does that kid get? And the fact that you put the early release, this is me, every early release day, okay, three hours back, counting, who gets out? I can't, this is, I will put this up on my refrigerator and refer to it all of the time. I mean, for those of us that have more than one or two kids, this is huge. And then, all those key dates, also huge. So I really, really love this new format. I'm with Lori, that I am a proponent of the before Labor Day start, I think because it gives everybody a gradual, gradual reentry, right? We go for a couple days before Labor Day, we have a four-day week of Labor Day, and then we have our first full week, and everybody feels like they're not half asleep at the wheel, because they're just getting over and not sleeping in all summer. So I love that. Also, I, I agree with you, I'm already, I was, actually, we had this conversation on the way in at school today, we were like, all right, guys, it's only March, like, we have a long time to go, we're trying to tighten up everybody's behavior. By June, kids are like climbing the walls, and trying to get them to pay attention when the sun is out, they just want to go out and play, it's really hard. And so, after a long summer, does everybody want to go back for a couple days before Labor Day? Maybe not, but we can get those two days in, and get out so much earlier in June. I think that's a huge win. So I, I love that before Labor Day draft.
So this is my second year of teaching after Labor Day. I'm telling you, it's like that week is just, it's all first day, every day, and I loved before, when we got all that out of the way, with all the transitions, with the, you know, I teach high school, so with the freshmen, and all of those things done before that Labor Day, then everybody, yes, as Jenna said, gets that break, and then they come right back, and they're ready to roll. So I really like the before the Labor Day draft. Also, I love with this idea of getting out sooner, heaven forbid we have another ice storm, or a massive, you know, amount of snow days, we're, we're building in even more of a cushion, so we're not looking so late in June that we've had to do in, in years past. We, we're building that in. And I, I agree, the PD at the end, especially department-oriented, so that you're regrouping, coming together, this is the math department, this is language arts, this is what we're looking at, you know, you get your department heads to really get the teachers excited about what they'll be doing curriculum-wise that next year, their classrooms are already packed, their grades are mostly done. I know how that is, when you still have kids turning in late work at the last day of school. But, I, I think that's a really good opportunity for the teachers to leave, feeling like they have a good idea of what they're gonna come back to in the fall.
And I just had a couple comments. You know, my take on it is, I like to go with the parents' results of the surveys. You know, we asked them for a reason, to get their feedback, so, you know, I think, anything, despite how I feel, you know, personally, I, I believe in respecting the survey results when we go out to our community, you know, to ask them for information, so that's kind of where I stand. And then I would say, I had a quick question before I forget it, the graduation date for this year, will we be setting that next?
I was gonna mention that, as a general...
Oh, sorry, okay. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. So we're good there, and then, and then we'll just put this calendar out for, for approval and discussion for our next meeting, then, yeah.
Yes, and hopefully you've had a, a chance to look at the guide to religious and cultural observances, that, that's going to go to every staff member also, so that, this is something I put together in my former district. Bulk of the material comes from the University of Missouri, which has done a lot of work on diversity issues, and respect for various events of cultural and religious significance. And we just want to make sure that people are aware of when various observances occur, and, and don't schedule things that, that conflict with them. And so, hopefully, it'll be helpful that the dates are on there for the next school year, so that everyone has a frame of reference.
I really appreciate the packet of information. Is it, is it out there right now on the website, available for families to take a look at?
Yeah, it was posted on the website this morning, and Facebook link was put up to all the board materials, shortly thereafter.
All right, thank you, really good job with this.
Thank you, and I want to thank the members of the calendar committee, we had some very good meetings.
Cindy.
Oh, Lori Peters.
I just was gonna make one suggestion, I'm, I really love the, the guide to religious and cultural observations. Just a note, on the Good Friday, I would say, just for accuracy, general practices, prayer, fasting, and services throughout the day. So, you know, there are noon services, there's afternoon services, a lot of churches have seven PM Good Friday services, so.
And the same thing for Ash Wednesday.
I will send that.
And Ash Wednesday as well, I don't know if it's, if that's on there. That might be worth adding, you know, I don't know. Okay, we'll move on. Next one, the vision of a Merrimack high school graduate. I'll turn it over to Kim, and the team.
Thank you very much. You know that I've been promising this presentation to you for some time, and we want to welcome the high school. As mentioned before, this work is different than the task force that's going forward to do the vision of a learner, which is going to lead to our strategic plan. This is in direct response to NIASC, and NIASC feedback. They've been working very, very diligently, a huge team at the high school. And tonight, to do the presentation and present what they have so far for the, for NIASC approval, is Principal Steve Clare, and he brought two members of the team who have been very, very involved with this whole process, Dana Chow and Marcy Pope, and they have a PowerPoint to show you. I apologize, we don't have handouts for the PowerPoint, so, but we can get them to you after this. So Steve, Marcy.
Lori?
So I, I just would like to welcome our high school principal. This is the first time we've got to see him since he was named our full-time principal, and so congratulations, and it's, we're honored to have you in our school district.
Thank you, I'm honored to be here, I appreciate it. So, this evening, we're just gonna run through our PowerPoint that was created for our, our NIASC response. It's called "The Vision of the Graduate." It started as a result of a May 2019 visit from the NIASC committee. They, they filed, they gave us this report back in 2019, well before my time here, so there's been a lot of work done prior to, to me, and I want to thank Dana and Marcy for all their dedication and hard work with this. They've really done a lot of the groundwork for this. So we, I came, I came in in August and kind of inherited this response. Our, our visit is, a testimonial visit is scheduled for May 16th. Our our visit is a annual visit is scheduled for May sixteenth to eighteenth of this year. So we're in the process of, you know, take taking all their the suggestions from the visiting team back in 2019 and developing a NIASC response. A very small part of this response is the vision of the graduate. It's basically one of four priority areas that that were determined to be a need of improvement or a growth need back in 2019. So this is just one portion of a much larger NIASC response. So with that said, I'm going to kind of hand the the PowerPoint off to Dana and Marcy to kind of go through it with you.
Good evening, everyone. So the vision of the graduate objective, it was to develop the the vision of the graduate statement based upon a community, district leadership, all staff and student input. And the committee work focused on compiling and synthesizing the data to create measurable goals. From then, we actually submitted the document to the faculty for input and for revision suggestions and then having staff vote upon it. So our driving question was what do Merrimack High School graduates need to know and what should they be able to do to be successful? So to keep in mind, our end product should be what is a Merrimack graduate? So then that led us to the three phases of the vision of the graduate journey. And we will go into more detail in the next few slides about each phase. So phase one was to develop a process, phase two, synthesize, still and create, phase three, approval process.
Co-chair for the NIASC committee is Eileen Banfield, who's out on medical leave right now. So Eileen and I began in 2018 and attended a two-day workshop in Hartford, Connecticut to figure out what a vision of the graduate would look like according to NIASC and what they were looking for, because it's different than a mission statement. And then we defined, well, these were the questions. What should a graduate know? What should a graduate be able to do? We sent in April, in October, in November, we had surveys to the school board for approval. These were surveys that were going to the community and I guess also to the teachers, I think. But the activity that we did, and we did this with staff and students, was we had a picture of a human being. Do you remember doing that, Caitlin?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we had a, we had a human being and we considered what's going on in the head, what they're doing with their hands, what's going on with their heart, what do they hunger for, where do they see themselves going? And we use the body as a as a metaphor for these kinds of ways for students and staff to think about what was going to happen for what would be a good way. What would be the things important for graduation and being an adult out in the world? So we also in 2019 spent time during August Academy to present and engage the staff with this activity. And in the fall, we did that with the students as well. Sorry, it's this way, right? We also used the surveys to poll all stakeholders. So that was included the community, that included staff at the school, non-teaching staff. And then we created a committee asking for volunteers from the community, the students and faculty who'd be willing to serve on our mission of the graduate, I mean, vision of the graduate committee. We formed the committee in 1920. We worked on it till spring 2020 and then COVID hit and we kept on going though. So then we came back to it by fall of 2020. And these were the identified skills and attributes that we were really had collated and, oh, what's that word, aggregated. We had a lot of post-it notes to to go through. We had lots of boxes that got them all into different places. These were some of the things of the identified skills and attributes that 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 we gleaned from these activities and surveys. And this is the vision of the graduate that has been voted on by the staff, but we'll get there. So I'm going to read it because I think it's just good to hear it out loud, too. The Merrimack High School vision of the graduate. Merrimack High School students engage in authentic learning that prepares them with the necessary life skills to become independent as individuals and active participants as citizens upon graduation. Merrimack High School graduates are positive community members. Graduates are effective, creative, and critical thinkers. They feel empowered to be leaders, to care about their self-worth and others and their local and global community. This may be evidenced by being resilient, ethical, open-minded, confident, and flexible. Merrimack High School graduates are future-ready. Graduates are driven to achieve their goals. Merrimack High School graduates take ownership of and responsibility for their choices and will continue to be self-directed lifelong learners. They have prepared for this by participating in a dynamic curriculum that aligns to state and national standards. They are developing executive functioning skills. They're becoming digitally and financially literate. And they're developing communication skills in the areas of listening, speaking, and writing. Generally, a a document like this would also have a visual or a like a infographic. That will be coming, it wasn't part of what we needed to do for, sorry, am I going in the wrong direction? Sorry, 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 sorry. That's not, we're, we're going to present this to NIASC. We don't, we're not, we're not mandated to have a visual for that. So we presented this draft of the vision to the faculty in May 2021. We got information back from the staff and we made adjustments. This was a draft of this. We reorganized the steering committee in 2021 because we had Steve, we didn't have Sharon. And different staff changes made that important to do. We then went back to the vision. We presented it again to the faculty and got 94% approval. But the faculty all agreeing that this should be accepted. And then we presented it to the district curriculum instruction and assessment committee. And they also approved it, even though really I think it just needs to be, I'm sorry, by. It's really for for the high school, so it's it's part of the high school process. Will I keep going, right? That's what I thought. It's you, right?
Yeah, could you, could you go back to the the vision? I just want to, part of, part of the.
Sorry.
Well, that's, that's the community survey and the parent survey. I linked to that. That's what they used back in 2019, correct?
There we go. Thank you. Yes.
So part, part of our NIASC response is also a growth plan, an improvement plan. So what, when I came in the fall, we 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 put together a group of people and we unpacked this vision of a graduate. And we 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 turned it into, I want to say, eight or nine objectives that are all included in the growth plan. So we took this and kind of broke it down, put it into student and student objectives. And now that is a part of our our NIASC response, the growth plan, which is is another one of our priority areas. So and that was, we 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 collected input from both teachers and students. Caitlin, were you a part of that this past fall? It was, it was done in homeroom? You were probably out that day or something. So that's kind of, so so it's not just this document. The document has been broken down and it is part of our 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 growth plan and it falls into one of the priority areas. So I just wanted to add that.
Yes, students were, it was a homeroom activity and we, we, it wasn't as as hands-on as the other one. It was more like, give us some feedback and we got it.
Yeah, basically, we asked students and faculty, what what do we have in place that kind of address these these skills? And what would be our two- to six-year plan to improve those areas? So that's kind of where we're at. I'm in, I spent some days over February vacation writing the final NIASC report. We still have a a little bit of work to do. We hope to have it completely done by, you know, mid-April, so we're prepared for our May visit. So I believe that's, that's it.
Okay, and then, yeah, so it's allowing us to move on to the accreditation process and there's appendix. There we go. Thank you.
So thank you very much for that presentation. And we had mentioned that the school board approval of it would also be one of the other approval demarcations. So I think for me to get you a copy of this, I can send you the PowerPoint and we can put it on next agenda if you'd like.
Yeah, or consent, you know, unless, unless, we could put it on consent and then if anyone wants to pull it, we can. Clearly, a lot of work has gone into this and it's exciting to see. Lori?
So my only, my only thing that I would maybe add to it is, you know, as we become more competency-based, you know, maybe something to say the ability to demonstrate proficiency in incompetencies. Because that's, we're driven to be proficient and you have a lot of other things in there, but you don't have, you know, like, you're going to be proficient in these skills.
Thank you for that suggestion. We do have, there is a piece in the NIASC response that addresses competencies, but I appreciate that suggestion.
Jenna?
I definitely think this is fantastic work. Thank you so much for all the time, effort, and energy that's gone into it. Just a couple of things. Can't wait to see the infographic because I like pretty things. So, you know, I like it when it looks fancy. I'm just one of those people that speaks to me that way. I mean, not that that slide wasn't awesome. It was great, but, you know, I love that. The other thing is, somebody said, you know, it was focused on the high school. The district that I work in, I work in a second through fifth grade school, and every single room I walk into, I look at the vision of a graduate. So I hope eventually that we can put this into a, maybe we simplify it maybe for the younger grades a little bit, or maybe we don't. I don't know how we do it. Maybe the infographic will do the simplification process or whatever. But in a way that we can print them and have them in every classroom, because the kindergarten teachers need to know what the vision of a graduate is. The second-grade teachers, the fifth grade, they all need to know because we're all working towards the same goal, which is graduating kids that meet that vision. So that's my only feedback there.
Love that. Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you all so much for your time this evening and your patience.
Thank you very much.
Hope you have a nice, nice evening.
You, too.
Okay, moving on. The next one is under new business is the review of the 2022 Proposed Voter Information Guide. Matt Jevon.
Oh. Thank you. Every year for, since I've been here, we've put out a, I used to call it, in my previous district, 23 years ago, kind of a layman's warrant, but that really didn't do the trick. So we kind of renamed it to the Voters' Guide. And what I just kind of did is took some of the salient points that were mentioned in the deliberative session and put them down into a document that hopefully will help and explain the legalese version of the warrant articles that we have to do by statute. Because when you, when you look at the ballot, you know, some of them are pretty crystal clear, you know. Put a roof on Thornton's Ferry School, but it doesn't give any compelling evidence as to why. And we're kind of prohibited from from doing such in a warrant article that's to be voted, because we have to adhere by Department of Revenue guidelines. So this is to kind of give it further explanation and the rationale behind each warrant. And it's not supposed to be biased or anything like that. It's supposed to be factual. And we try and keep this as factual as possible. And before this goes out to press, this is a first draft. I don't expect a lot of conversation on it tonight unless there's something glaring you need to get off, you get, you know, let me know about right away. But I'd like to just have it for your consideration, review it over the next week. Any comments, just email me only directly. And I will look at them and I will, you know, make some modifications, adjustments, whatever. I've done that with previous board members who gave me comments and some who said it looked fine. But there's always something, maybe you see a typo. Please, 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 let me know if there's a typo in here. Sometimes, you know, a turn of a phrase can mean a different thing. You can read it one way, I can read it another way. Because I'm I'm very close to this. And when you're very close to preparing a document, you have a tendency to perhaps take some shortcuts that you assume people know, because this has been your life for a long time. And so it's very helpful to to get, even though it's been your life for a long time, especially you, Shannon. No offense, Matt, for that, but.
I'm still young, I think.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. And so any input you can give me would be absolutely much appreciated. I might be certain to to incorporate that in there. Give you a full final draft and then we're we're off to the printer and to get this into people's mailboxes. With the, with the little voter's key that hopefully we can fit it on there, that I have seen people go in with there. They're either blue or white or green. And some of them actually have them kind of marked up. So when they go into the ballot, they can look and go, aha, I know what this is, and just kind of hit the check mark. So I think it's an important part to do to educate the community. I think it's worth the time and effort we put into producing it to make sense out of warrant articles that when, that when you read, you just don't make sense out of them, you know. So it's not that we don't think the community can understand, but quite frankly, I look at some of the warrant articles and I don't really understand them for, you know, for all the legalese involved in them. So I think this is really important. So it's for informational purposes tonight. I don't mean to get into a work session or anything like that. But if there's anything glaring, let me know after the meeting. I think we have picture time after the meeting today, right? So you'll, you're all looking your best and nicely coiffed, you know. And so, you know, just, just let me know after the meeting or let me know via email just individually and I'll make adjustments. And I'll talk to Bill, I'll talk to Kim, I'll talk to, you know, whoever, just to run them past them to make sure they all make sense. So if you don't mind, this is before you tonight for your consideration and your future input.
Thanks, Matt. Shannon?
The only thing I just want to roll with the board on this is, you know, there was discussion, I think, in past that when you're making your checklist. It's also making your checklist of the people that you're going to vote for, and they're not on here.
No.
So it's something, if that could be something added.
I could put a cop, Pat, Pat Heinrich has been suggesting that I put a copy of the ballot with this.
Yeah.
If you think that's a good idea, seeing Pat Heinrich has been suggesting, as my arm is twisting behind my back.
It might be where the idea came from. It's not like she's a stranger, so.
Yeah, right.
But I don't want to call it my own if she planted the seed. But that's, that's something I think, if you're saying you're using the back pages of Cheat Sheet, having who you're going to vote for is part of Cheat Sheet, probably.
She planted the seed with a very sharp and deep shovel a few years ago. So I'd be more than willing to put that in there, because I have a nice PDF copy of the ballot with all these questions on there.
That's just my thought, but I don't know how you guys feel.
Okay.
That's a good one, Shannon. Any other comments? All right, we will move on to scheduling the 2022 graduation date.
The graduation for the senior class of Merrimack High School will be Saturday, June 18th. A little bit late compared to other school districts, but we started a little bit later this school year. And the graduation date is established by statute in terms of some of the guidance on it. And it states that the high school graduation date shall be set no more than five school days before the end of the scheduled school year without consideration of making up lost time. So it is from the originally scheduled last day of school, which for this year is June 21st. And so complying with that statutory requirement, our graduation will be June 18th.
And can you just remind me how many snow days we actually did have this year?
We, well, to this point in time, we've had three.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Three days.
Any questions regarding the graduation date? Okay, we will move on to item number seven, policies, the first reading of administration of federal grant funds policy. Matt?
This is a policy due to a Department of Education audit that went through primarily every district who had a single audit, which means anything over $750,000 in federal money, you have something called a. which means anything over $750,000 in federal money, you have something called a, a, a single audit. And that is, uh, nothing more than, they make me give them a DNA test and everything like that, and they really do a deep dive into all the processes and procedures. Well, the state did one also, which, um, they do like every three years. And so this is something that, uh, all districts have had to adopt. They recommended we adopt this policy. It's 23 pages long, so I am not going to read this, because halfway through, people like, they'll be turning the TV off and say, forget about it, we're not going to read it. But it, it, it consists of policies, you know, one through 10, allowability, cash management and fund control, procurement, procurement additional provisions pertinent to the food service program, conflict of interest and mandatory disclosures, investment management, equipment and supplies purchased with federal funds, travel reimbursement, federal funds, accountability and certifications, time and effort reporting oversight, grant budget reconciliation, and sub-recipient monitoring and management. That's if, if we had a grant and let's say we partnered with Hudson and we would accept the money on behalf of the DOE and we would apportion a certain amount to Hudson and Hudson would be the sub-recipient, so we would be responsible for Hudson's actions also. We've done that in the past and it worked, it worked out okay. It's a little bit of extra effort. We don't normally like to have sub-recipients to the grants and have us act as kind of a pass-through for them. That's just a little background information. But this is, uh, something that, we have a, a giant federal funds handbook that's probably three-quarters of an inch thick that kind of has all these covered in them, but the DOE would like a, a formal policy adopted. And this policy came from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Um, I talked to Barrett Christina, he put me in touch with Will, I forget Will's last name.
Phillips.
Will Phillips, thank you, who, uh, gave me this policy. We submitted it to the DOE. The DOE has already accepted this as, um, satisfying one of the criteria of the, the federal requirements that they have. Um, and after we do this, I just have a time and effort procedure to, uh, that I'm working on to finish off, and that will take care of all the, uh, the points they had on their audit of federal funds that we had, uh, a few months ago. And so this is the, the final piece, it's 23 pages. It's in the board packet, uh, that's posted online. And, uh, there's lots of CAFR references and everything like that, and, uh, it's fairly complete, complex. Sometimes, a little bit difficult to understand, to understand, but it meets, we know what to do. You know, we have our audits here, we've never had a finding on any of our audits, right? Federal funds, general fund, anything like that, we've always been no concern, no audits, no, no, no findings, nothing like that, every single year that I have been here. So we have racked up a perfect record for, even before I got here, you know, with Jim O'Neill, Scott Isbell, the, my predecessors. Uh, we have always done exceedingly well in, in meeting the, the, the standards that we have. We've always presented our financial statements fairly and accurately to our audit firm, and, um, they appreciate that and we appreciate them. So, this is just, uh, another piece of the puzzle that we have to put in place to take care of the requirements of the federal government and, uh, the state, because, you know, we're actually the sub-recipient of the federal money coming from the feds to the state to us. So they have to make sure that the same policies they have in place, we have in place too. So we'll just leave that there. If Bill wants to add anything, he's more than welcome to do that. But this is 23 pages long, you have a copy of it, it's posted online. Uh, it's pretty much straight from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, so. In that case, I don't think we can go wrong, and it's up to date too.
Thanks. Questions? All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. The February 21st, 2022 Public Minutes Drive a Motion made by Shannon, second by Lori Rothaus. Any changes or updates to the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's 5-0-0. Next is the approval of the March 7th Public Minutes. That would be, uh, motion please, Shannon, second by Lori Peters. Um, any changes or updates? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, zero, abstain, one, that's 4-0-1. I was excused that name. And then next is the March 8th Public Minutes. This was after the deliberative session. Do I have a motion? Made by Jenna, second by Lori Peters. Any comments regarding these? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, 5-0-0. Uh, that takes care of the minutes. Um, the consent agenda. Uh, Kim Yarlet?
Thank you very much. I do have, um, one letter for retirement, and that is Patricia Cunningham, who, um, is at the high school. And I just want to congratulate her for all of her years of service in Merrimack, and in particular for this last weekend, um, with the competition that took place, um, with the musical events, um, the New Hampshire musical event. She certainly is a legacy in New Hampshire for all of her work that she does. Um, so we have that letter, um, of retirement. And then I have one educator nomination, and that is Tony O'Keefe as a special education teacher at Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Do you want to handle those in two separate, or?
We can do them together. Um, all those in favor of, I mean, I'm sorry, the motion for the consent.
I moved the consent as, as presented.
And a second, Jenna, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, that's 5-0-0. Next up is, um, other, we're on to others. So any committee reports? Shannon?
I have two. Um, on the 16th, Parks and Recreation Met, I filled in as the alternate. And, uh, we reviewed ordinances, they haven't been reviewed in five years, so I went through some language updates, uh, tried to make them current and, and, uh, sustainable, uh, with some, with some stylistic changes. And then, um, it was on the agenda to discuss, he said the skate park, but truly, it's the playing for Old Garrett Drive. Um, so, you know, as we had mentioned in prior meetings, we need to talk about, as, you know, we being the board and the town council to talk about short and long-term planning. And so that way they can plan accordingly as well, because they do have it on their CIP, but for the route. Um, and if there's any movements on our CIP, it's going to affect them. So having good, open, um, you know, productive dialogue, I think will be very beneficial. But they definitely want to talk about what, you know, what it would look like if they had to relocate it. Um, the materials that they have, they would go with different materials and everything else if they moved it. And they're doing some basic exploratory right now for alternate town properties, um, that would be conducive. They had mentioned Bishop Field as a, a consideration, and honestly, I, I suggested against that, because it's so tucked away from the main part of the town. And, um, and even like one of the locations would be kind of tucked to the back of the field area, and it does need proper line of sight to get proper, um, oversight from the police, so it wouldn't have good line of sight to do that. So, I think Bishop Field was not the right choice. I know it's adjacent to the middle school, but it is so tucked away from the, the heart of the town that I don't think that's a conducive location. So, just the two cents I gave at the table. And then on the 17th, Professional Development Met, and we did talk about, uh, the upcoming presentation tonight, so we'll skip that part. Um, Devices for PARS was something that came up that I think is really important. It's something that, um, we have in, in the Mesa Contract, that, uh, PARS will get devices for use and not use personal devices. So we just want to make sure that, you know, all is happening to make sure that, that, uh, comes, comes through. Because not only is it contractually, uh, contractually required, but it's also best practice for things like student data privacy. Um, and then IPDP deadlines were discussed, because we do have people that are going into their certification third year, making sure people are on track, that need to be on track and are checking in. And then, uh, reviewed continuing education hours and reimbursements, uh, to make sure that's also being kept on top of for both, uh, certification reasons and budgetary reasons for their professional development funds.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other committee reports? Uh, correspondence? Shannon?
I received correspondence from a, a non-resident about, and actually, it was just a misunderstanding, I think, that they believed that teachers at Merrimack get, uh, discounted tuition for their students if they want to come here. And I just, uh, clarified that that does not happen. So, uh, and I copied Bill and Cindy on my response, so that way it's on record in case there's any questions.
I think we all got individually, yes.
I'll respond just, uh, back one, see, I think you already have your answer and, you know, so on. Okay, uh...
Comments?
Oh, um, we're on correspondence.
Okay.
Um, any other correspondence? Um, I had one that, I think we, I don't know if we all got it or I got it, I can't, I can't recall, but there was a parent that was concerned with starting, uh, before, the potential of starting before Labor Day, um, because they already had booked some family plans, so, um, I just wanted, that was one that came to mind. And I think that that's, I may have a couple others. If not, if I didn't get them, I'll, I'll catch up. I'll catch up next meeting with any of my outstanding ones. Any comments? Uh, Lori, and we'll just go right across. Lori, Shannon, Jenna?
So, uh, last week when we were at our town meeting, um, we overlooked thanking a few people, and one of them is, um, Lynn Christensen, who's been the town moderator for 30 years. Uh, she actually was longer than that. She worked with, um, John Lyons as the assistant town moderator, and she's been steadfast in her, um, commitment to Merrimack. And we're going to miss her strong presence and her knowledge, but I know that Brian McCarthy's going to step in and do a wonderful job. And then, thank goodness, that Tom Kane, in the following night, uh, thanked our two board members. And thank goodness that the town got a chance to give them a standing ovation, uh, to Shannon and Cindy thanking them, because, again, I think it's really important when people give so many hours and so much time to the board that they are recognized for all their achievements.
Thank you. Um, any other, and then Shannon, you're next for comments.
Um, I had a couple of things, um, and first, we, um, on our January 11th agenda, uh, there was a request for you to, um, communicate, or you asked for us to allow you to communicate with Senator Daniels on HB 478. So I didn't see what the communication was to Senator Daniels. And, um, if there's any response back from him, honestly, um, so I'd like to see if, um, you could share with the board since, you know, we authorized the communication on our behalf, um, how that went.
So I didn't send to Senator Jan, Daniels specifically, but I did actually reach out to two of our state reps who gave me some guidance, and that's where I'm at right now, is I've, um, there's been, some of the information that I received was, um, that we may have a challenge because of the levels of our water are still within the legally defined, um, levels. And then, um, I was also given a referral of a name or two, um, from another state rep. And so that's where I stand with that.
Great. And then, um, another thing, a couple meetings ago, maybe it was last meeting, um, I asked for a new agenda item about, um, the drop rates. And there's nothing, um, I mean, I only have one meeting left, and I'd like to know, you know, what's going on to, to stem that, because it is, especially at grade 12 hemorrhaging, from a numbers perspective, I don't have enough line of sight as to what's going on with that. And that's the focus, but I think there's definitely movement in other grades where we're not, you know, what's happening to these kids that are dropping off, where September 1st, they were here and now they're not. Um, and I think that's important for us to understand what's going on. Um, and where they're going, are they going to other schools, are they stopping school altogether? And just that data is so important, um, I think for this board. You know, as we're talking about the vision of a graduate, well, we have some that aren't going to graduate, so I'd like to know what's going on with them too.
We will have that for you, uh, this week.
Great.
Jenna?
So I have a couple of things, just, uh, the first one is just a reminder that at some point, I would really love a presentation about our trade programs, knowing more about them. Again, I, I did say it wasn't pressing, but I do want to, I do want to see something at some point. I want to understand them more, um, just so that there's that. The second thing is I just want to, um, publicly thank Mrs. Cunningham for her years of service to our district. She, when we're talking about the programs in Merrimack that we can all turn and point to and say, wow, we are so proud of that, our music program, not just at the high school level, but all the way up, it's the pipeline leading up to, you know, Mrs. Cunningham also deserves, you know, credit for so much of that build that makes her able to do her job so well. But she has done such a phenomenal job with our high school band program. They are always exceptional. And I bump into people around the state, you know, involved in band programs, and they go and they say, wow, your band is always so impressive. And, you know, when my, my first students got to the, you know, upper elementary and they started taking a band, and you go to Cavalcade of Bands and your kid's like squeaking out a thing on the clarinet or whatever, and then you hear the high school band, you're like, for real? My kid's going to be able to do that in a few years? And now, here I am with my kid in the high school, and yeah, they really do do that in a few years. And it's, it's crazy, but it's amazing. And, um, not only are they excellent, but, you know, those kids have a really great experience. Um, and so I just want to publicly take the, the time to just thank her and what a phenomenal job that she does and, and all of our, our music teachers that feed into her program. It really is one of those things about Merrimack we can be unreservedly proud of.
Thank you. Lori, did you have any comments?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, first, just on a personal note, I want to thank Cindy and Shannon for this whole year, my first year on the board, working with you. And we don't talk about our personal lives up here, but my life this year has been insanely crazy. And I've, my family and I have experienced things that you only experience maybe once in a lifetime, and we had like 10 of those things. And the board as a whole, and especially Cindy as chair and Shannon helping with my procedures and everything, have been very, very supportive. And I just want to say that I really appreciate that. I want to thank you for all the years you have served on the board. Um, it is a tough job, and I have learned a lot this year, and, and, uh, sorry to see you go. Um, the second thing I wanted to say, and I'm so glad you brought up the seniors, because I was going to ask that same question. But the other one is, um, in our warrant articles, we had discussed wanting to be competitive with the salaries, and Brian Stisser had brought up at the Budget Committee, do we have some data on how many teachers have resigned to go to our competitive districts? And so I'm wondering if we have pulled that together, if we could pull that together. I think it's a good talking point in regards to, uh, the teacher contract and the matrix correction.
May I just say, we, um, I work with Matt, I'll work with Matt on that data, and, uh, we do have some research on, from UMass Lowell also in terms of what the average rate of, um, attrition has been.
Yeah, like I said, overall, we've lost probably 100 staff members, professional staff. There are codes associated with exit thing, exit statuses, and we just need to pull those together, so, yeah, we can do that.
And I just had one thing, um, which is kind of consistent with a lot of the other, um, things that have happened around COVID, and it's regarding the, the emails, um, to the school board for public comments. So I was going to suggest doing a quick agenda item to remove that, um, next week. You know, uh, people can, you know, come to the meeting, um, the cases are down, so, you know, that was, I think, just one more housekeeping item I wanted to, um, to address. All right, with all of that, um, we are now with the public comments on agenda items. Um, anyone in the room have any public comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. Uh, I just wanted to touch on two agenda items briefly regarding the school calendar and the provoke, proposed voter information guide. Uh, I wanted to express my appreciation to the calendar committee for all the thought that went into that and the transparency in the process. Um, I really liked that the significant cultural and religious, um, observation dates were on there and those holidays that are significant. I think that makes us understand each other as a community better and makes us stronger, so thank you for that. I also agree with Board Member Hardy and the times being there for a school start. I only have one. And I still don't know what time early release is, but now it's in my calendar, so, um, I appreciate that in the new format, so thank you for the work. Um, I also definitely wholeheartedly support all the information, um, that's going to be made available in the voter information... available in the voter information guide, so thank you. I was able to go to the deliberative session and I will say that having each of you on the board and our educators and staff share the rationale and the reasoning behind the importance of the items that are up for vote by our town makes a huge difference. So making that available to those who weren't able to physically go to or tune into the deliberative session, I think will only empower our voters hopefully to get out and vote because now they have an informed decision and not just a name or a legalese type, you know, warrant article that they have to read and revise. So I'm hoping that supports a really strong turnout April 12th. So thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, anything on the, we'll go ahead and do what we do, we'll go back and forth.
Jennifer Modle, 27, Ellie Drive. Dear school board and administrators, anticipating that the midterm elections will be well attended in 2022, I am personally uncomfortable as a parent and community member with having school open on November 8th. I have worked at the schools in prior years when the school was open on election days and in times when elections were not as well attended. I found that even back then, the closed spaces can cause disruption for the school day. This includes a disruption of gym classes, school lunches, arrival and dismissal procedures, and other disruptions. Some students are able to roll with these changes quite easily, but other students may find these changes much more difficult to adjust to. I also feel that security cannot be guaranteed. Despite the very best efforts in planning, there is always a possibility for a kid to wander into the wrong area or for a door to be left unsecured and/or ungated, unguarded, sorry. I also have concerns of busy and potentially chaotic parking lots during school arrivals and dismissals. I respectfully ask the board to consider having school closed on election dates, specifically our midterms, but I prefer closure on both election days for the reasons stated above. I do appreciate the new look of the calendar. What an improvement and thank you for all the thoughtful planning and work that the team put into planning and creating it. Best and thanks to board and admin for your service. Jen Modle.
Are there any other public comments? And how about online? That's it? All right. I will accept a motion to adjourn, no, to go into a non-public session. Made by Lori, second by Jenna. Lori Peters, how do you vote?
In favor.
Jenna Hardy? Shannon Barnes?
In favor.
Lori Rothaus? And I vote in favor. That's 5-0-0. And thanks, everyone, and have a good night.